All right, Board of County Commissioners of Bradford County, Florida. It's February 20th, 2025 at 6:30. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. David Kirkland if he'll lead us in prayer and flag salute.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We had a citizen that passed away yesterday, Mr. Benji Bass. And I just asked that all of you remember him, or remember his family in prayer, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in the busyness of today, we just pause to give you thanks and praise for your love, your grace, and your mercy that you've extended to each of us. Lord, we ask that as this commission does their work tonight, that you would give them wisdom, common sense, Lord, just the will to do what they know they need to do. And we just ask you to continue to bless this county. We pray for the Bass family and ask that you bring your peace and your comfort to them. Lord, we pray for our first responders, our military men and women. We ask that you watch over them and bring them safely home to their families. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Commissioner Thompson will not be with us tonight at this meeting. And so moving on, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to move item four up to the, to the front for, for the awards, lifesaving awards presentation. But before that I do that, Sheriff, I got to ask a favor. We have a very special event tonight, Captain Griffin. It's her birthday. She's been at work all day long. She's come to the meeting tonight, so they've asked for the sheriff to sing happy birthday.
If y'all, if y'all sing with me.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
I gotta admit, I think that's the first in 40-year coming of commission meetings, so that's, that's pretty good.
Then I told you I wasn't going to do anything, right? I told you I wasn't going to do anything.
I was up to the challenge, but he wouldn't tell me what, I didn't know what she was going out with, but hey, I was with it. Hey, I go ahead and frackle, I learned, I go with the program a long time ago. Otherwise, I wouldn't have stood a chance. Mama said I had a face for radio. But with that being said, tonight is something very special, and I was going to do the presentation and present this, but I'm going to let somebody, well, I'm going to speak this part, I'm going to let him come up. You know, our jail, we, we take for granted. They do so much each and every day from inmate work squads, our work programs, to now our certificates and inmates are getting something on our release, doing that to mental health. They're dealing with people we live and work with each and every day. The majority of people inside that jail are not bad people. They've made bad decisions. Now, there is some evil over there. So they have to balance that with what they do each and every day. They get griped at, they get mamas calling, daddies calling, wives calling, girlfriends, sometimes a girlfriend and a wife's calling. Happens. And they have to deal with that. They get a lot of accusations that aren't true. My baby got beat up. My baby's sick and y'all won't do nothing. He did, he's been on medication and y'all aren't getting his medicine. We have the best nursing staff anywhere, above not. But with that comes our corrections staff. So tonight, I'm not going to say, I'm going to let Lieutenant Johnson finish up the rest of it. On November 19th, while housed in a multipurpose cell for behavioral problems, so that tells we already had a problem, when I was in that cell, inmate William, I don't want to say his last name, was seen covering the camera in a cell. So that means with all those cameras, now you go in there, there's 90-something cameras throughout our jail to try to capture every corner of it. They're having to pay attention to all of that. They noticed it. So somebody was paying attention doing what they're supposed to be doing. And Sergeant De Sue instructed C.O. Miller to go to the cell front to see what he was doing. When Miller arrived, he noticed inmate Heath had cut himself and was bleeding. He notified Sergeant De Sue. Sergeant De Sue immediately responded and seen a very large amount of blood coming from underneath the cell door. That tells how much blood we had. Wasn't a little bit, wasn't a minor cut. Sergeant De Sue notified central control to activate EMS. She placed inmate Heath in a strength for security purposes, because as we know, Ms. Andrews, you know, they will do that to try to form an escape or cause harm to somebody else, another inmate they want to cause harm to. Following proper protocol. And her and C.O. Miller escorted into the program room. She grabbed a towel and applied pressure to his wound to stop the bleeding until EMS arrived. The inmate was transported to the hospital where he was treated for his wounds and returned to jail. He was then placed in the constant observation on suicide watch. We were this close to having another fatality in our facility. But because of the brave and immediate actions of our staff, we saved untold dollars in lawsuits, medical, and all those other things. I'm going to leave it here, and I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Johnson to tell you a whole lot more about it, and he's the one that actually submitted this to the Florida Police Hall of Fame for the lifesaving award. Lieutenant Johnson?
Thank you, Sheriff. Good evening. So my job was to go in, review the video footage. When I, one of the things I came across when I was reviewing the video footage is that the inmate was asking for help. He had cut himself. When the flap was open, he asked for help. He realized that, you know, this has went too far off, cut, I'm bleeding, and I'm, I'm fixing to die. So that was one of the things I noticed during the video. It, I got with Major McKinley, and that was the thing that I wanted to recognize there. This, this tragic situation, it could have been very tragic. We, I want to turn this into a positive and influence others to take this job, you know, serious. So with saying that, I would like to have Sergeant Carla De Sue and Deputy Daniel Miller up here. And why, I wrote something real quick, I, I just want to, want to read. Congratulations on receiving this lifesaving award. This recognition is a testament to your incredible bravery and quick thinking in a moment of crisis. Your actions not only saved a life, but also inspired those around you to strive for excellence in emergency response. Your commitment to helping others and your readiness to act when it mattered the most amplify the qualities of a true hero. You have shown us all that with the right training and determination, we can make a significant difference in this community. So I'd like to congratulate you and present these awards to you.
If I can, I'd like to get him with the Board of County Commissioners and get behind in the background.
Give him, give him a hand.
And I don't know if the community is aware or not, but we, the sheriff operates the jail under the authority of the Board of County Commissioners. And we strive hard in excellence, and all of that comes from Major Don McKinley and her command staff. But really, I know it looks like women run everything, and they do.
They are.
They are, even at my house. So I get that, so I want to thank you as a Board of Commissioners for always putting the support behind. They really have a thankless job a lot of times and go unnoticed, but it's because of actions like that. And Mr. Sue, she retired on this one time. But Don persuaded, we, we, we was able to bring her back, and she's outstanding. And of course, now Jazz, her daughter, and that beautiful son she has, I wish I had hair like that, God, I wish I did. But, you know, we've got her, she's our victim advocate, and she's also, it's in final print for our yearly report that y'all will be seeing in our booklets come. Jazz has kind of taken over that function, and I love Zach, but Jazz is really putting a final finess to that, and you'll see an upgrade in that this year. So again, thank y'all, and thank you for supporting us.
Yes, thank y'all so much, thank you. Y'all are welcome, but you don't, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. So thank you, thank you. Yeah.
Thank y'all again.
Yes.
For everything you do.
All right, continuing on our agenda, the second item on our agenda is public comments. If anybody from the audience would like to make a public comment, if you would, please fill out a card and come forward when I state your name. And when you come forward, just go up to the microphone and tell us your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. The first one I have here is Mrs. Strong. Do you want to be second?
My name is Vianne Strong. Post office, Box 530 Lauder. First, I want to say that I am forever here for my mother's ditch. Recently, I saw on the website for the governor that they are going to be investing a lot of money out of Camp Landing. We spent a lot of money on the south end of Bradford County mowing, and I saw that it takes approximately a month to mow in districts four and five. Well, with the money that the governor is going to spend at Camp Landing and people coming in to the north of our county, wouldn't it be nice to start a mowing on the north end also, namely around my mom's area? You know, like on 225, going out toward Camp Landing so that we can make a good impression coming into Camp Landing and into Lauder and into Bradford County? You know, so they're going to spend multiple millions of dollars. So shouldn't we spend some money and present Bradford County in a good light with people coming into Camp Landing? Because they're going to come through Lauder. So to make sure that that area is mowed. That's what I'm just saying, is can we, can we make sure that that area is mowed more so as much as we mow on the south end? Can we make sure that we present Lauder in a positive light and make sure it looks good with the money that they're going to be spending out at Camp Landing?
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. John Miller.
Thank y'all for having me tonight. I'm representing TDC, which is Tours Development Commission, as y'all well know. We had a meeting today.
Will you just say your name, your name and address, please?
John Miller. Name's, uh, 14709 Southeast 267.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The meeting this afternoon is our, we meet once a month. We run the conference center, and the conversation today came up, and we talked about it to the extent of maybe TDC taking over the fair association. Not taking, not in that manner, but having a person run that, that's a paid person, or TDC, they would also run the conference center and we would commit to, financial-wise, help pay any bills if we have to, to cover the conference or cover the fairgrounds. And it was pretty unanimous in the TDC that this may be a good thing. I know Dale, the person running the fair association, has some issues right now. And he's at wits' end, and of course, he may need some help in the next few weeks covering some money they owe to, to Mr. Gissy. And I think there's a way to make that work, and the primary thing would be the professional management. Someone that can book the building and make sure it's straight, make, the conference center the same way. We need management, we need more use in the conference center. And both the fairgrounds and the conference center is committed for the well-being and of Bradford County, for the people. The sort of reason that we have the conference center is for people to have weddings and engagements, and if the governor comes to town, maybe that's the spot for him to come also. It's pretty difficult to run that association with a volunteer. So I think there may be a way to join forces. We're both under the, the control of the county commission. We do get motel taxes receipts, and it just might make some sense to do that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions any of you have at this point in time. What I would do is recommend that you take it under consideration and maybe have a workshop or some joint effort, and this might need to be done in a pretty quick timeframe.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll get with Mr. Cornigay, and the rest of the board can talk to him too on their own. But I do appreciate you coming up and.
Yeah.
And telling us, and that, that was a very good TDC meeting today, so I do appreciate it.
Sometimes in 20, 30, 40 years, you need a new approach. We may need a new approach at TDC. I'm not sure the fairground can stand a different avenue of doing business. It's a big asset.
Yes.
Those buildings are very important for the residents of this county, the kids of this county. I think we need to protect them as much as we can. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, that's all the public comment cards I have. So seeing no more, I'm going to move on to item three, approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion from Commissioner Daughtry to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Spooner. If there's no questions, all in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any motion carries four oh. All right, next is item number five, Keystone Heights Airport Authority, Mr. David Kirkland.
Good evening, Chairman Riddick and Commissioners, it's good to be with you tonight. I appreciate this opportunity to provide you with an update on some things about the Keystone Heights Airport that you may not know, and some information about projects that are upcoming. I first want to start off by saying special thanks to Scott Cornigay and the efforts that he had put in place to assure that the new access road into the airport with the DEO grant funding was completed, and it was completed on time, and it was a crunch, but Scott, you got it done, and we greatly appreciate all the efforts you and Jason Carter and everyone who is involved in that. And I also want to say that the Keystone Heights Airport Authority, we really value the partnership that we have with Bradford County, and we just look forward to the positive impact that we'll make together as the airport continues to grow and, and have a regional impact in, in our area. So with that, I'm told that Amanda has me all taken care of. I will stand this way, if you don't mind. A little bit of history about the Keystone Heights Airport. You see that 42J? The FAA assigns to every airport in the United States a ID number, and that specifically, each one is different for each airport. 42J is kind of unique because the airport was commissioned in 1942. It was originally commissioned and named the Crystal Lake Army Airfield because of its proximity to Crystal Lake. Somebody in DOD or in the Army Air Corps at the time, I guess, didn't like the name. So that same year, though, it got changed to Keystone Army Airfield. It, it was a place for training pilots that came from all over the United States, and in 1945, it was decommissioned. It sat for a while, and it's my understanding that the Department of Defense came to both Bradford and Clay Counties because the Keystone Airport actually straddles both counties, and asked each of those commissioners if they wanted the airport. And both counties said no. So the city fathers at Keystone Heights said, we'll take it. And so in 1947, Keystone Heights acquired the airport from the federal government, jumped forward a few years, and in 1991, the city of Keystone Heights implemented the Keystone Heights Airport Authority, it was Keystone Air Park at the time, Authority, and basically, they were oversee the day-to-day operations of the airport. We are the only public-use airport in both Bradford and Clay Counties. A little bit about public-use airports in Florida. Florida has 129 public-use airports, and it's broken down into three categories. As you see, there are commercial service, international airports, that would be like your Jacksonville, Orlando, Miami, and others that we have in the state. You have general aviation airports, Keystone, Palatka, Williston, Lake City. And then you have military airports, NAS Jacks, Eglin, McGill, McDeal, Homestead, and, and then others that, that we have in the state. that we have in the state. Of that and in those 129 public use airports, in 2023, FDOT did a statewide aviation economic impact study. The total impact is $336 billion in 2023. Of that, you'll see how it's broken down into military, industry alliance, visitor spending, on-site activities. That's a lot of money that has positive impacts on airports and local communities. Getting more specific with the Keystone Heights Airport, in the past three years, here's just four examples of $3.8 million of different projects that we have done at the airport and our engineer always goes out and tries to find all the local contractors that they can that are qualified to do the work. So we've had a positive impact on our communities and it's good for local businesses as well. Here's some future projects. Every year, and I was sharing this with Chairman Riddick earlier, we meet with the FAA and FDOT Aviation and Spaceports once a year to look at projects that have been actually put in a construction program and that gets funded either by the FAA and or FDOT and I'll share some more about that here in just a minute. We look through our projects again and so from 2025, 2031, we have these projects that are going to be done at the airport, $14.9 million in projects. So again, a lot of that work will involve local contractors, local businesses. When we have these crews that come in for these long-term projects, they're staying in local motels, they're eating at local restaurants. So it's a good positive impact. So the funding sources, I mentioned Florida Aviation Grant Program, that's under FDOT and then the Federal Aviation Administration, the FAA. So with the Florida Aviation Grant Program under DOT, since 1983, this program gets funded by aviation fuel taxes and there's that amount per gallon for every gallon that somebody pumps into their airplane, whether it's 100 low lead or a Jet A type fuel, a portion of that goes into this State Transportation Trust Fund. 92% of that goes there. The remaining 8% gets deposited into the General Revenue Fund. So that's FDOT, that's Florida Aviation Grant Program. On the federal level, we have the FAA. Those funds get funneled through an airport improvement program and that's funded through Airport Airway Trust Fund. That comes from taxes and user fees on airline tickets, international passenger departure fees and fuel taxes. So there are certain things that the FAA will do at the airport, mainly just runways and lighting. As far as hangars and other improvements, taxiways, FDOT forms funds a large portion of that. Economic development, we're a significant, we think we're a significant economic asset for Bradford and Clay Counties. There's 2,400 acres there at the Keystone Heights Airport. We're a prom site for aviation-related enterprises and logistic operations. We have a lot of people that fly into our airport because we're centrally located here in North Florida. They don't have to get involved with some airspace restrictions, flying around Jacksonville or some of the other large cities. So coming into our airport is a little bit easier. We also have great fuel prices. We try to be competitive with everybody around us. We're a potential catalyst for local and regional economic development. We've already attracted some interest from aviation and aerospace companies and we're ready to be the economic corridor that will diversify the region's economic base and we mean more than just Keystone and more than just Stark. Again, we span over in the Clay Counties, so we want this to be a large regional impact in our area. We are collaborating with both Northeast Florida and Clay County Economic Development Corporations. In fact, I met with Crawford Powell, who is with Clay County and today on another project and Amber Shepherd with Northeast Florida Economic Development Corporation has been a real asset. In fact, she has introduced two companies. One's an international company that is looking at the airport and some properties that we have. So we're looking forward to moving forward with things that are going to impact our counties and region in a positive way. Some things that we're doing right now, we have some appropriations requests in for the legislature this year. We're asking for some funding to put deceleration in turn lanes on State Road 100 at both airport entrances. The sheriff can attest to the fact that there's been numerous accidents out there and it's all because of people trying to turn in from either way, east or west into the airport and they get rear-ended. Water sewer project is also an appropriations that we're looking at and that would be serving the airport and going back out Airport Road to State Road 100 and going back toward Keystone to connect there at the RV park where the water sewer line ends right now. So that's a project. And then one of the other thing is a strategic economic development plan for that 2,400 acres that we have there at the airport. The airfield itself that you see depicted in that graphic is about 600 acres. So we've got a lot of other properties there that are available for development. I always like the statement that a mile of highway will take you just one mile, but a mile of runway will take you anywhere. And with that, any questions?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Corcoran, can you speak to the long-term benefit of the airport project for Bradford County? I know that there are lots of projects in the future which will bring in employment for people who would work during those projects, but could you speak a little bit to the long-term benefit that would be helpful to Bradford?
So with, for example, the new access road, that will open up that whole west side of the airport for commercial and light industrial development. We want companies that will come in that are clean, commercial, light, industrial, that will also be bringing good-paying jobs and that will be here for the long term, not just somebody that's going to come in and want to make some widgets and then, you know, in five years they're gone. The FAA does limit us on our contracts and leases that we have with potential tenants of 20 years, but then we can negotiate for extending that as well. And that's what we try to do with all of these tenants is make them aware that, look, we're looking to be long-term partners here with you.
Okay. And one of the other things to ask, I know that at one point you all were doing aviation training, those pilots that may be from Daytona, wherever would come for the training, will that continue so that you would be a source of a training institute for people like that?
Yes, so we have actually a couple of different types of training going on. One is with general aviation. We have three certified flight instructors that have their own businesses and they're training pilots for general aviation and a lot of those will go along, maybe to be airline pilots as well. There's a lot of training that's required, but we have that going on there. We also have MHD Rockland that is still doing the recurrence training for those allied nations that have pilots that have to go through recurrence training. They're still doing that at the airport as well.
And one last thing and I'll leave you alone. When I was at the Florida Association of Counties Conference, they have some aviation programs, I guess more central Florida and Miami area where they do short trips so that if a person wanted to go, let's say from Orlando to Miami, they could on the short trip. Is that something in the future that you see that Keystone could do?
We could do it. Our runways would accommodate charter flights. That's basically those short distances that you're talking about. And typically those are smaller private companies that provide that service, but we have that capability to serve them.
Mr. Andrews, go ahead.
I just have a couple of questions. Do you ever see it becoming more commercial? I mean, is it large enough that it could become a commercial airport?
It's not large enough for the runways that would be required for commercial aircraft, but the bigger factor in that is that the FAA is the one that says whether or not you can move from a general aviation type airport to a commercial type airport. And we don't have the number of operations that they always require, operation being a takeoff and a landing. So they have this matrix that they use for determining that and we don't have near the level to even approach them about that.
Okay. And just one more question and it was about, it's about the construction of the roads. And I don't know if Keystone was part of or assisted in the road that we did pave before. And I guess what I'm asking is when we start this program or this, I mean, the deceler lanes and stuff like that, whenever we did the first road, we kind of shut everything. I mean, Jason pretty much was out there every day, I mean, for long, long hours and it kind of really, I mean, we don't have enough help as it is. I just was wondering, is it where Keystone, do they have a road department where they could help?
No.
With some of the work?
No, they don't. And with respect to those deceler lanes and turn lanes, what would happen there? If we're blessed to get the appropriation funding, our engineer will go out and bid that so that there will be private contractors under DOT's inspection as well doing that work.
Well, and I think that's what happened last time, right? Because there were several companies that were out there paving.
Well, what happened in that particular instance with the DEO grant, we were under such a time constraint, not to mention a financial constraint, that the only way we could get it done is if we did it ourselves.
Oh, okay.
And so that's what ended up happening there. And then in terms of it not being connected into 100 currently is because the airport's in the process of moving that fence line so that we can semiize and have room to pull off the highway before they get to the gate. So as soon as the airport gets the fence line moved, then we'll just go in there and connect it in a matter of days.
And that contractor has started doing that work today, this week actually.
And I just want to say thank you for coming and sharing with that. I mean, some of us understands the plans, but I did not, I didn't know any of the plans. So thank you for coming and doing that for me.
You're welcome. Let me just add one more thing. I've been on the board since '09 and I'm going to share some numbers here and it's not because I've been on the board, but just to show you the progress that has happened at the Keystone Heights Airport. In 2009, we were a $6 million entity. As of our last audit this past year, we're now a $17 million entity. So there's some big things that have happened at the airport and positive things, so we want to see that continue.
Mr. Chairman and Ms. Andrews, if I could add to what Mr. Cornigay was saying, it would have cost us a tremendous amount of money with that grant and having to give that grant back and then also just affecting future grant opportunities. So it was great the way it worked out, it really was. But and also I'll add that, and Mr. Kirkland, I know I've come out and visited you before out there, but it's a nice field trip. So if you ever get a chance to go out there and really check it out, it's a pretty neat operation. Mr. Kirkland, I wanted to ask, I know you and I have had discussions about this in the past, but are there any future plans, again, for some type of like, you know, training that is related to aviation? Because, you know, we always talk about the trades and, you know, primarily it's electrical, HVAC, plumbing and, you know, there's so many other trades that are out there that just go, you know, unnoticed, building inspection departments, you know, aviation, whether it's avionics or whether it's the actual, you know, working on the planes, that type of stuff. So has there been any more discussion about that, about providing some kind of training out there?
We have looked into that. In fact, we have one of our board members that sits on the Keystone Heights High School CTE Council. And one of the things also, this same board member was an instructor at FSCJ at Cecil Field for A&amp;P, Airframe and Power Plant Mechanics. And so he has actually had a couple of students that he knew that he was able to get down and actually take them over to MHD Rockland and they've had an opportunity to get some hands-on training there with that. A new board member that we have, Buck Bernie, is involved with Emory Riddle. We've been trying to work with the school systems with getting an aviation curriculum in the schools. AOPA, which is Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, it's a huge organization, aviation organization. They have an approved curriculum for flight training and ground school and flight training that's free to any school. All they have to have is one representative from that school go and get certified in that material and it's real easy. And but we've just not been able to get that done yet.
I just, I know we talk about, you know, future opportunities out there at the airport and then having some kind of a, you know, just a workforce, a trained workforce to be able to, you know, come out there. And I'm not sounding like a broken record, but I think putting, you know, third graders on the bus and sending them out for a field trip and letting them see airplanes fly around is fascinating. And again, it just gives them something else to think about for, you know, future career or whatever it might be, so.
And we welcome that. We've had several field trips of kids from Keystone come out and they have a big time. Rockland's great, they open up one of the P3s so they can climb all around in that and we have some of our other pilots bring their airplanes up and open them up so they can see a general aviation airplane and then see a P3. So we welcome that. We love to have kids and adults.
Yeah.
Come out and visit.
And are there any future events coming up? I know there was the air show, you know, I think that was at the celebration, the 80 year celebration, but is there something on the horizon, anything coming up like whether static displays or just anything that people can come out and see?
Yes. So there's two things that are going to happen. The snowbird aerobatic competition that we host every year is coming back for the third year. And that will be, it will finish up on March 29th, which is Saturday, but they start on the Wednesday prior to that. I don't have a calendar in front of me, but they will be there and they'll be weather permitting. They'll be doing a competition, they have their own competition, they have their own judges and groups, but the public's welcome to sit in the parking lot or in the field, bring a chair, watch an air show. I mean, it'll be one airplane right after another that will be competing on the 29th. Keystone Heights, the city of Keystone Heights is celebrating its centennial this year and it started off in December with a gala and our next event is going to be a Centennial Spring Fling. It's going to be at the airport on Saturday, March 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We're going to have live band there, there's going to be vendors, there's going to be food trucks and it's going to be open to the public. And what will be nice is that the snowbird competition will be finishing up on Saturday. So the public's going to get a nice weather permitting. If they can fly, they'll get a nice show to see.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kirkland.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry, go ahead.
You all did some kind of a show, maybe it was two years ago with cars or trucks or some kind of community event.
That was our 80th anniversary. That we had some show cars come out. And in addition to that, we also had static displays as far as aircraft for the public to look at and we had a big time celebrating 80 years.
And actually that was my question, if you was going to do something like that, because that was a great event. I took my grandsons to it with the cars and the race cars from the firm and the airplanes. And I believe that one big airplane, I can't think of the name of it, y'all had opened, that everybody, it might have been the one from Rockland, that everybody walked through it. It was just a great show. So if we could have one of them more than every 20 years or whatever, it was just a great show. I think a real good turn. I think a real good turnout.
Maybe 85. You know, a couple of years out.
Okay.
And if, if I can, just ask one more question, since you mentioned Rockland, and I don't know, because I haven't asked for an update, but is there any further conversation about the Douglas Building with them at all? Do you know?
Yes, ma'am, there is. We've, as a matter of fact, someone on behalf of the county met with them week before last, I believe, last week or week before last. And we're trying to come up with a plan to, to get them in there without them having to put four, five, six million dollars in upfront, because that's their hesitation now. Back when we first started the conversation, the number was more like $2 million. But we're looking at different opportunities, different options, including grants and other sources of funding from Florida Commerce, Amber Shepherd's helping out with that, and so is Marty Shaw. So, the, to answer your question, yes, we're still in talks, and we're encouraged.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and I thank you, that, the Keystone Airport, we keep saying it, that's the, that's the diamond in the rough for Bradford and, and Clay County, and you guys are polishing it up more and more, and I tell you, when that thing takes off, it's, it's going to be great for both counties. So, I, I can't thank you enough for all your work you've been doing, and thank you so much for your presentation, and we do appreciate it. And again, whatever we can do to help you, let us know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, for this next item, item six, I guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Cornigay?
Yes, Mr. Andrews, do you want to lead the conversation on this item? Yeah. Oh, before we do that, we'd like to pull 6A, item 6A.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And only address item 6B.
Yes, we would like to remove that from the agenda, that way I can have more of a one-on-one with the board, discuss various fees related with what this discussion's about. So, we take off 6A. 6B is the Comp Plan, Comp Plan Land Development Regulations, text amendment to our subdivision regulations, as the board knows, the last year or so, we've had an influx of minor subdivisions in the county. So, we're looking to upgrade the, our road section, street section in our subdivision, Section 5 subdivision section of land development regulations. The price in front of you is $25,200. This price includes the North Florida Planning Services to help, will include any amendments to the Comp Plan related to the subdivisions, and a complete rewrite of the subdivision regulations to ensure they meet the Comp Plan and county standards visions. Also includes going through the Comp Plan and LDRs to make sure these changes are not in conflict with anything we have in our records as of now. This money will include, is a, is a lump sum, so to speak, of any type of amendments, future land use amendments, or which is changing the land use, the amendments to the Comp Plan, which is basically what we're discussing tonight, to change some regulations, rules, regulations in the Section 5 subdivision, street regulations, as it compare, as it relates to minor subdivisions. Also, the amended zoning atlas, zoning amendments, land development regulations. So, this price is a little high, but we are getting a, a good bit of, of work for our buck. Now, they have proposed an hourly rate, but in speaking with Mr. Stubbs, which is the gentleman I've been in contact with at North Florida Professional Services, it'll probably much be a wash, so to speak, by the time we get all this work done. So, it's a pretty good price, I mean, we are getting a lot of bang for our buck, as everybody always says, but this, but this relates to, as the board has asked Mr. Cornigay to get with me, to amend the regulations to, let's take care of these minor subdivision roads, because more and more people are coming in here, and like we see from the things in the past, you know, we just can't keep up with the roads we've got now. And so, this, this regulation, this rewrite, so to speak, will help bring the road-based street, basically street seeds, is what they're called, street seed. Help with more of a firmer bed, so to speak, put on like dirt, then you'll have a base of lime rock, and then you'll have like a 20-foot driving path. The thick, basically, you're, you're changing the thickness of the lime rock and the millings, or the surfacing, the asphalt surfacing, but this is basically, this is what, this is getting, this is what this Comp Plan asks is, is for about. And this will take, this is just having North Florida Professional Services, let's say, look completely through our subdivision regulations, and again, as they relate to other items in our LDRs or land development regulations, and our Comp Plans, that we're compliant with state and local issues. So, that's what this is, this is what it's about.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Andrews, so the, the formal, I guess, fee of this, of the 6520, or the amendment of the comprehensive plan, is a different?
No, ma'am, that, that, that is included with this money. This money, so the 22, the 25200, is, it was, has, this is that, the 65, the 6520 is related, is lumped in with this $25,000, from 25200.
Okay, that had me a little confused.
Yes, ma'am, yeah. But that was just, that would be a, a down the road, that would be like a single line item, if we'd had to make a text amendment to the Comp Plan in the future, then it would be the flat fee of 6520. But what this money is for right now is to look at and rewrite, and help us make sure our subdivision rules and regulations, particularly as they relate to new roads and minor subdivisions, are correct and current. Does that make sense?
Okay, so then, just for my clarification, so it's, it's going to take care of the subdivision regulations, so what about any other?
This, no, ma'am, this money is geared toward just our subdivision rules and regulations, and our comprehensive plan, and our land development regulations.
So, in addition to the 25, we would, whatever that may be related to residential or any other development, will be in addition to that?
Again, that's, yes, ma'am, this, this B, this money is set aside for any type of rules and regulations that relate to our subdivisions, not just necessarily the, the roads, the road discussion, but anything else we have in our subdivision rules and regulations, I keep repeating myself, but that's what this money's tagged for. And then the line item I'm getting you in Exhibit A, Page 1, basically the scheduled fees and operations, again, that's a lump sum of the first six items. And then they break, then Exhibit B, they break, or Exhibit A, Exhibit A, they break these items down, items down per dollar amount. So, again, the 22, the 25200 is, like I said, the six items that if we, if we need to do them, and we've already got the money covered, and that they're getting, it covers their services.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask a question?
Sure.
We will hold them to a standard as far as what the road is going to be, because I don't, I mean, we want to make sure that it's a good road.
Yes, ma'am.
And not just them running out, doing a thin layer here, a thin layer of that, and then some millings on top.
Right. Yes, ma'am. We have, not to mean to interrupt you, but we have started with meeting with Mr. Crawford, a building official, and also Mr. Dawes, our public works guy, that we meet with the developer before they get started, to make sure here's what we expect of you.
And I know this will probably be a difficult question, but how long before we can get that going, and?
It may be a few months, I think is what Mr. Stubbs told me, because they have to do quite a bit of review.
Okay.
But the, the last few minor subdivisions that have come through my office have been off county maintained roads that are already there.
Okay.
But anything that goes interior, mostly because your nine lots will fit on the side of a county maintained, or a hardtop, or a state road, but once they start, we get into the bit, 10 lots or more, that's when you get into these interior roads, and that's where this will be a big help. But we do, we do meet with the individuals, the developer, let them know here's what expected of you, that, being the developer.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Another thing the board needs to keep in mind is that once these changes come back, and the product is produced, that'll come back before the board will review, so you'll, you'll be able to see what changes were made, what specifications were put forth, and all that sort of thing.
Okay. I guess the, the only question I had, and I think the, the price of the 25 was in line with other comprehensive plans.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, you go ahead.
But, but that was for, I think, for everything, regardless of whether it was for sub or residential.
Are, are you talking about our previous planning council? The amount we paid them?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, we, I know two years ago, we were paying them over $23,000, is that about right, Randy?
Yes, from my department.
Yeah, and we essentially got nothing.
No, no, I, that, that, that's not the question I'm having, I'm just saying the amount seems to be the same, you know, around the same, which is reasonable, but that it covered everything, not just for a subdivision.
That's?
These, these fees will be compatible with what we were paying in the past.
Okay.
But this, this, this money is for the lump sums, let's make sure we got everything in our subdivision rules and regulations, taken care of at one time. So, if we had to go back in front of, if someone wanted to do a land use change or zoning change, which that would, again, be related to this, this department, related to this, this money. If that makes sense, I don't kind of?
Through the chair to Commissioner Spooner. Just because I see some of these types of full comprehensive plan rewrites that are being done with my other clients, to do that comprehensive of a level of work, you're looking at six figures, those are huge numbers, not something as small as this. This is actually in line with the price of doing, taking off a small piece at a time and trying to do those, those changes.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting more, more items out of this money, so to speak, instead of just them, the, changing some things in the Comp Plan, the LDRs, they're doing a complete review for us, and then if we have to make some type of land use change or zoning changes, that money's already in there. Okay? This, this money doesn't go just to the, the Comp Plan rewrite, it goes to everything involved with this, this, like, going through our subdivision rules and regulations, and if they have to do a land use change or zoning change, this money will come out of that.
And board, keep in mind, I mean, you know, when they're stabilizing subgrade, when they're putting down base material, and they're putting pavement down, and they're doing it right, that's the longer we don't have to touch it, or any future board.
That's why we're hoping that we'll set a good, strong standard.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a, it's, it's probably just at a minimum, like a DOT-type standard.
Very close, because we will increase the thick, the thickness of the lime rock that's supposed to be laid down, and also the thickness of the asphalt or millings that may go on top of that, or that will go on top of that.
Yep.
And now, your machines, I don't think they make 18-foot wide machines anymore, I think there's 20-foot wide asphalt paving machines, so that's basically the width of the road will be, the hardtop will be at least 20 feet. But then again, that's what this discussion is about, and this, this rewrite and review is approaching, is looking at.
So, all you really need is just consensus of the board for him to go ahead and?
Yes.
You don't, you don't want a motion, a second, and a vote, just?
No, this is just discussion, I mean, I thought it was just a discussion.
If they, if they want to approve it, you can make a motion or vote to approve to move forward to?
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the agenda, so you can, you can take action.
Okay. All right, yes, the board would like to take action and go ahead and get them started on this progress?
Yeah.
Process, because the sooner they get it done, the better off the board is going to be, especially on the planning and zoning.
And the, the ask would be that staff, direct staff to move forward with North Florida Professional Services for the contracted amount of 22, or I'm sorry, $25,200.
I will make that motion, that staff move forward with North Florida Professional Services for the Comp Plan, and at the amount of what Mr. Cornigay said.
25,000.
$25,200.
$200, yes, sir.
And I will happily second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you for being at the meeting tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item seven, the clerk's report.
All right, everybody, Dana's going to get up and give us the state of the county address for October through January of this year. We only touched on the big departments, the general fund, fire rescue, and road department.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
It's not a plan to present a brief update on revenue and expenditures for the first four months of fiscal year 2025. If you take a look at the single sheet I passed out, you, we will be reviewing the general fund, the fire rescue fund, and the road department fund. First, we have the general fund. We began fiscal year 25 with a fund balance of $17.9 million. Revenue for the first four months was $5.7 million. Expenditures totaled $7.9 million, resulting in a use of the fund balance of $2.1 million for the first four months, making the current fund, fund balance $15.7 million as of the end of January. If revenue and expenditures continue at the same rate, you can expect the fund balance to be around $11.3 million by the end of this fiscal year. Do you have any questions about the general fund's four, four-month update?
No.
All right, let's move on to fire rescue. We began fiscal year 25 with a fund balance of $835,000. Revenue for the first four months, including budgeted transfers from the general fund, was $2.6 million. Expenditures totaled $2.4 million, resulting in a savings to their department's fund balance of around $224,000 for the first four months, making the fire rescues' fund balance just over $1 million as of the end of January. If revenue and expenditures continue at the same rate, you can expect the fire rescues' fund balance to be around $1.5 million at the end of this fiscal year. Any questions about that?
No.
Finally, let's review the road department fund. We began fiscal year 25 with a fund balance of just over $1 million. Revenue for the first four months, including budgeted transfers from the general fund, was $642,000. Expenditures totaled $805,000. This resulted in a use of their department's fund balance of around $162,000 for the first four months, making the road department's fund balance $860,000 as of the end of January. If revenue and expenditures continue at the same rate, you can expect the road department's fund balance to be just over $500,000 by the end of this fiscal year. Any questions?
Any questions, board?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you very much, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dan.
Sheriff's report. All right, thank you. County managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have a few things we need to cover. First of all, the Northeast Florida Economic Development Partnership that we're a part of, we currently have two board members, Commissioner Andrews and Pam Whittle from the Chamber of Commerce. It's time to, to appoint, either reappoint, or select another commissioner to participate on that. I will tell you that Pam Whittle has rolled off, and now Amber Shepherd will be the, the other. And if Ms. Andrews would like to continue serving on that board, that would certainly be appropriate.
I would love to.
Make a motion, if we need a motion?
Just consensus.
Just consensus, good.
Yep, all right, congratulations, Commissioner. All right, the second thing is, a couple of you had mentioned to me about a, a program where we could beautify the roadways, the roadsides, in terms of litter and cleanup and all that sort of thing. I had a conversation with Jimmy Crosby at the City of Stark recently, and he and I agreed that we could probably do a joint, make that a joint effort. So, he and I are going to sit down and come up with a plan, a proposal to, to put that in place. Just wanted to give you that update. At the last board meeting, I tried to show you the explainer video from the, that was produced through the strategic plan grant, and it wouldn't work, but we're going to try that again now, and hopefully it will work.
Welcome to Bradford County, Florida, where businesses grow and communities thrive. Located in the heart of Northeast Florida, we're a gateway to opportunity with the perfect blend of accessibility, resources, and a welcoming lifestyle. For businesses, Bradford County is the perfect launchpad, strategically connected by major highways like I-10, I-75, and US 301, and served by rail lines and regional airports, we offer seamless logistics and global reach. With industrial parks ready for development and a supportive local government, Bradford County provides businesses the infrastructure and resources to succeed.
Moving my business to Bradford County was the best decision. The infrastructure and community support have been game changers.
Bradford County also prioritizes workforce development with institutions like Santa Fe College, North Florida Technical College, and high school workforce training programs. We provide businesses with skilled employees ready to make an impact. Life in Bradford County offers more than just business opportunities, it offers a lifestyle. Safe, welcoming neighborhoods, excellent schools, and a community rich in culture. Create the perfect environment for employees and their families. Whether you're exploring the natural beauty of our lakes, attending local events, or enjoying the charm of downtown, there's always something to discover. From an unmatched business ecosystem to a vibrant lifestyle, Bradford County is the ideal place for your business and your team. Join a community that values growth, innovation, and connection. Discover why businesses and families alike choose Bradford County as their gateway to opportunity. Living and working here has been incredible, the sense of community and opportunity is unmatched. To learn more about what Bradford County has to offer, visit our website or contact us today. Your future starts here. It's better in Bradford.
All right, there you have it. So, it's currently being broadcast on our YouTube page.
So it, uh, is currently being broadcast on our YouTube page. Uh, we're having our developer put it up on our website, and, uh, the, I believe the Economic Development Corporation is also putting it on, well, I know they are putting it on their website, so hopefully we'll get some traction out of that. I thought it was very well done. I was pleased with the, with the way it turned out, and I hope you are too. So, the, the last thing we need to talk about is, uh, you heard Mr. Miller explain the thoughts and the discuss, some of the discussion that was had today at the TDC meeting. We, I, at that meeting, I reminded the group that a year ago, when we were faced with the same situation, that this board, uh, had agreed unanimously to, uh, pay off the note for the property and, and help with the management of the, of the fair. Uh, we find ourselves now in a very similar position, and what I would like to ask is, is this, is it the board's desire to, uh, to direct the board chairman and the county manager to move forward with the possibility of purchasing the note and taking over management of the airport?
Um, fairgrounds.
Airport on my mind.
Commissioner.
Long day. Fairgrounds, yes.
Chairman Reddick?
Yes.
Yes, and I think this is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for our, our board, uh, for the county. Um, and as you mentioned, that we made the offer, you know, last year, so there's so much potential there, um, and need, I would absolutely encourage our board to, to do it.
Is that a consensus?
And I do have a question. Um, because of how everything happened last year, um, I just want to ask you, was there someone from the actual fair association that met with you, that brought, brought it to you, that asked us to do this, or are we?
So, so the first, the first I knew about it is when I actually read about it in the paper. And then, um, and then I had an opportunity to speak with Bob Milner, and he, you know, he said that, that that would certainly, it's, now would be the time, if the county's gonna do it, to, you know, to, to address that. So, and then, of course, like I said, today at the TDC meeting, um, there were two fair, uh, board members present, and it seemed like they were, you know, they refused.
I just wanted to make sure that, so that people don't, um, see us jumping and, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and there's something else that we should probably say at this point. I do not believe it's the intent of this board, well, let me back up. I know that it's not the intent of this board to acquire this property and for any other reason than to save the fair for the, for the kids, Bradford County kids, and everyone else that benefits. This is not an effort to start some sort of enterprise fund where we turn it into a money-making operation, it's, it's just not that, and I think it's important that the public knows that we're not gonna buy low and sell high.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. Now, this, I'm sorry, any other, any other questions, board?
Well, I, you know, I know we talked about this also moving forward, if this is something that we go into, I mean, we certainly can't keep things the way they are, because then we're gonna end up, a year from now, having the same discussion. We've gotta figure out, you know, what that's gonna look like before we do anything. Now, I will say that, you know, based on the, the newspaper article, that if it goes into foreclosure, I mean, you know, we certainly want to save it from that, because there's no telling at that point, you know, who could end up with it and what it may end up being, unless it's somebody that has an interest in actually, you know, having it as a fair. And I know that's what we want, uh, as a board, and I know that the citizens want that, you know, to have the fair, but, uh, we just can't, we can't continue to operate it the way it's been operated. Um, so we've gotta figure out, you know, what that looks like, and, you know, I, I don't think anybody on this board's been in the fair business, and certainly, um, anybody on staff has, so, uh, so whatever ideas have come up, or, you know, you know, consultations from, you know, anyone else outside of Bradford County that is in the fair business, but, uh, again, I mean, we can easily say, I, I just don't think this board wants to be pulled into the same mudhole that the, the fair association has been in, because, you know, they've caught enough, you know, just by not performing, and, you know, if it continues on that way, then we're gonna get pulled into that same conversation.
All that was said, can I speak for a minute?
Yes, go ahead, yes.
Uh, all that was said with an important caveat left out of there, that I don't think anybody on this board would let a takeover happen and us invest one point seven something million dollars without having total control of the board.
Exactly.
At least half the members or something of the sort, because this place has just been running the ground. And we can't, like, oh, Commissioner Dory said, we can't let, we can't keep the same thing going like it's been going.
And board, if we don't move on this, we, the citizens could actually lose the whole fairgrounds. That's the way this is going. If this goes up for a public sale, there would be no more Bradford County Fair, and I just, I can't even imagine the thought of not having the Bradford County Fair or the Bradford County Fairgrounds. This is, this is our opportunity, and, um, we need to jump on it and jump on it fast.
And I think, I think it's worth saying that we have to realize it's gonna cost us money to make this successful. We're gonna have to hire staff or a staff member that, like Mr. Don already said, has some, some sense of what, how you run a fair. Because we don't know, but we can find someone who, and I, I mean, we're gonna have to do that in order to pull us out.
And it's not just a fair, it's, I mean, there's a lot of events that need to happen out there to, to really, you know, keep this thing open and keep it going. So, uh, you know, just like Mr. Kirkland was talking about, you know, having events, they need to, you know, they being whoever, you know, ends up being on an association, uh, plan events, just like all the fairs that are around us that have multiple events throughout the year, and, um...
Play County, for example.
Right.
And, and if you really look around those other counties, um, it's their county that has the fear, you know, uh, and in our case, uh, if you look back historically, years ago, that's how it was, but anyhow, I think it would be a lost opportunity if we don't take, um, advantage of the situation now, and it would be a loss to our whole community. Um, you, you look at, the fair has been going on since I was a kid, and that's been a long time ago. So it offers an opportunity, it offers, uh, other activities that can take place out there. I know a year ago, um, they had talked about some of the plans that were being made to have a simulated, um, rodeo or, um, different, uh, shows out there, um, and it's an opportunity to, to expand, but yes, we'd have to have some changes in the management, um, but it's an opportunity that we, we can't fail our community and not move on it.
And, and I would like to add too, that, uh, the riding club, I mean, you know, that's been a big thing, and I don't know why they were ever in the way of anyone down there in the corner, and I don't know why that, that can't come back, uh, because there are, you know, people that, uh, are very passionate about that, and, you know, whatever that looks like, um, I think we need to, you know, try to work with that riding club also, if, if we move forward with doing this, and, you know, offer, you know, that back to them to be able to, you know, have their events that they have.
Yeah, there's a lot of major changes we can make, but board, the first one is, we need to secure it as long.
Right.
That's the bottom line.
That was my comment, is, you know, when you look at everything as far as what the possibilities are, there can be an overwhelming number of logistical hurdles, but as tonight, what your county manager's asking you to do is, he's asking for consensus so that we have to resolve the debt and the ownership issue first. All these other things will come back to you for further decisions if we resolve those two things first. So as long as there's consensus to kinda begin that negotiation and discussion process, that's really kind of the first step that needs to be taken tonight.
Okay. Is that good?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
All right, so, so we have consensus, uh, the chairman and I will work closely together to come up with a, a way forward, and then it may be that we end up calling for a special meeting before March fourth. That's a real possibility, so kind of be prepared for that. Uh, if not, then we'll take care of the business on, on March fourth.
Okay, thank you. Okay, county attorney report?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
The sheriff does have a comment.
Oh, oh, yes, sure. I'm sorry.
Yes. You have a lawsuit, a foreclosure paperwork, and it's written. They only had twenty days to respond, so I just want to stress again, I am the subject moving forward. Publicly say that anybody out there that have anything to say against one of our commissioners in the first time, we did that out of kindness, worry about the same thing when addressing the fact that if you have any wish to, on any commissioner that I spoke with, on myself, this is all about Bradford County, and we can't stand, I tell you, we talked with an individual in state today, you better do it now, do it quick, because other counties have lost it. We didn't want to be in that.
Thank you, sheriff, yes. Okay, all right. Last item, uh, commissioner comments, uh, Commissioner Andrews?
Um, I just think that we've covered a lot of very important things, and very happy that, um, we do have this opportunity to say that, and, um, I guess that's about all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions for Smith?
Yes, and I'd just like to acknowledge, um, the Sampson Cities, um, groundbreaking for, um, the, for the, um, gas station, the living quarters, um, and moving forward with that, and also, um, the sheriff's help from years ago in helping that money to be made available through, um, through the grant. Um, also, I wanted to pick on my sheriff and just ask if everything is okay in terms of, um, um, your area getting, uh, with the financial folks so that everything would pan out.
Absolutely, we're on track, it's actually better than we thought, we finally worked through that, and put in the new software.
Good.
We just, we're both, we're doing the same thing, we're talking to, we're paying from the proverbial same bucket now, some of those issues have worked out, and our new finance lady was doing a phenomenal job. I get reports on my face every week on weekends, we're, we're constantly monitoring the fixing the issue that we're addressed, so we're good there.
Okay.
And moving forward.
All right. All right, and then I just wanted to acknowledge that we've gotten some compliments to this board, that we're having budget workshops and also the fire assessment, giving our citizens a chance to come and ask any questions that they want or bring in any information forward, and so appreciate that, and let us just continue doing a good job. Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Dory?
Yeah, I, I don't really have anything, other than, Mr. Miller, thank you for being here. I know that you asked if there were any questions, of course, during, you know, public comments, but, uh, just always want to thank you for being invested in this county like you always have been, and, uh, you know, appreciate your concern, and also just, uh, you know, even, you know, when we talk about the, the civic center, and, you know, doing whatever it takes down there to, you know, keep that active as well. So, again, thank you for your community support, we appreciate that. Um, other than that, again, just to, you know, reiterate what Ms. Andrews said in the beginning, pray for the Bass family. Benji was, just, he was a great soul, you know?
Yes, he was.
Such a loss, you know, so certainly keep him in your prayers, and, uh, just, you know, thank you all for your work, and appreciate everybody being here.
Thank you. And I thank everyone for being here tonight, and thank you, sheriff, for helping us, and Mr. Miller, I, I can't thank you enough, really do, we'll get this thing moving forward and, um, get it, get it done right and fast. So, uh, and, um, last comment I have is the, uh, don't forget about our toxic roundup. It's this Saturday, right here in the courthouse parking lot, from nine to three. Um, if you're like me, if you change your oil in your lawnmower or cars or whatever, and you got it in containers, it's super easy, all you have to do is pull in, there's people there, you don't even have to get out of your car, they'll unload it and take care of it, and you're on your way. It's super fast, super efficient, and I thank Benny Jackson and our road department for, uh, for, for always running so smoothly, so I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. And, uh, if there's nothing else to come before the board, uh, I think the hockey game's on.
Okay.
All right, meeting adjourned.